Hey, good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for August 27th, 2019 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Clerk Borba here. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heis.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by State Senator Dana Polhanke.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. For the approval of the agenda tonight, I'd like to switch around items F5 and F4. That would place the Metro Act item as F4 and MERS discussion at F5. Keeps it better flow, frankly. So, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Dempsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Next is item D, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Comments or questions by the board? Okay. Got your mic on.
There's a report in there from Gary Heitman and Jack Dempsey and the clerk, I didn't think you wrote it, but tell me what is the real purpose of what is the, what do we, action do we need to take or what is it telling me to do? And what was the reason?
Well, there may be all kinds of actions that need to be taken, but this is just kind of a report, a kind of a capitalization of the past couple of elections and the Election Commission thought it incumbent upon themselves to kind of give a report to the, to the board about the past two elections so that we can discuss in the future any kind of changes that need to be made and there will be requests for changes, a request for equipment. And so it was just kind of the highlight of kind of what went on so the board would be informed so that when we do have these discussions, you will have some background information.
Will you, Jerry, have some type of written plan of what you're going to do for the first primary, which is what date?
It's going to be March 10th is going to be the presidential primary and we will be talking as we go through the budget. There'll be items in the budget that you'll see and you'll say that this has something to do with this, this report that you saw.
He's not, excuse me, sorry to interrupt you, he's not picking up audio in the back.
This isn't working either.
None of these are. We might have to re-run this stuff.
Yeah, we had hoped that that letter was going to be tied to specific action plan, things that Jerry and Sandy had wanted to put together that Jack and I saw as opportunities in the last election.
My strong recommendation is to get them down on paper, your plan, so that way you can use March as a pilot to dry run some of the items, especially if you're going to have skyrocketing absentee ballots. Hopefully, we're not doing anything to exacerbate that and increase it, but it's enough to raise a red flag that we need to manage more absentee, labor-intensive.
Some communities are already reaching out to their electorate and advising them to move forward and do an absentee ballot. Canton just spent probably $40,000 mailing out a letter to that effect. And I know other communities are doing that. And so I hope we don't spend $40,000.
That isn't part of our.
But we will be doing stuff differently based on that number being higher, so.
Thank you for that letter. It was very informative.
There's another item, there's a page in there, a police report, it doesn't have a title on it, at least in my hard copy.
Oh.
It was a pie chart.
Yeah.
Is that an extra or just didn't get labeled?
Yeah, it's, um.
Page, oh, let's see.
This page.
Hold on.
Forty-four.
Yeah, here it is. Let's see.
Forty-four of 180 or 281.
Forty-three, it would be forty-four, but I have the feeling.
Oh, there's no, there's no key on it.
Yeah, I have the feeling there's no, yeah, it might be page forty-four. It looked like this.
Yeah.
Forty percent of the time they respond to that thing.
So, okay. My recommendation is also the cover page. Do something to reduce the amount of black ink on it. That's a lot of ink.
Yeah.
Just flip it around or whatever, change the negative.
Are you all set, Chuck?
Yeah.
Couple of things on the bills this month. One, Wade Trim had, looks like their final bills on the SADs for three of the subdivisions. Personally, I hope we never see Wade Trim again. My sub had apparently seven engineering hours. No one in my sub ever saw Wade Trim again. There we go. So these are professional services and it looks like the very end of their SADs in Deer Creek, Hunters Creek, and Ridgewood. The other piece.
Before you leave that.
Yeah.
Those are completed now and when, maybe they've already received the invoice for the SAD or will that be in the December bill? Is that what you're talking about, these road paving projects?
Right. Yeah. And, but Wade Trim, that was the end of all their money, so whatever they had.
My point is, did.
You know, they're not to exceed.
The invoices go out for the.
Oh, for Mark's area? I don't know.
Yeah, we, that was done almost two years ago.
Yeah.
I mean, though, these are projects that, that have been, you know, completed, I think they were completed in 2017. We had over 55% of the people pay in one lump sum and the other 45 opted to pay over a period of 10 years. So they've already done the first installment and in December of this year, the second installment of that 10-year installment will go out.
So Wade Trim is sending bills two years after the fact for a project. So these invoices were not rolled into the project.
This is the do not exceed this amount. They got every penny of the do not exceed amount in this, in these three last bills.
Should we honor those invoices if it's two years after the project and we've invoiced already the residents?
We've asked them to do a number of follow-up visits and inspections on various open items that I presume are now closed, but this, this project went on for many years and there were a lot of follow-up complaints, concerns, and questions.
So they're legitimately owed the money or should we hold it back?
Yes, no, I would not hold it back.
But don't ask me to vote for them again.
Understood.
One of the, the other issues, we have a former finance director who is now working in a different city and now is a consultant to us. We got one of the bills for, for her with an hourly rate and I just want to make sure everybody understands, you know, well, I know we're paying her, but I don't want anybody in there BSing. I don't want anybody in there, this is a consultant now who comes in, gets paid for the job, and then she leaves, as she did to us. She left and went to a different place. So, you know, would be nice, but we don't sit in there and have coffee on the dime of these people.
No, her time is being tracked by me and any phone calls are being tracked and accounted for.
What's her hourly rate?
150 an hour.
150 an hour.
So employees know that they have to get approval from Jerry to speak with her? Is that the way it works?
Yes. Anyone that she talks with has to go through me first.
Good.
Except for like if the supervisor or the treasurer calls her with legitimate concerns, they're not calling me first. They're calling with issues like on the budget and stuff like that, so those are legitimate calls.
Congratulations to the, the Police Department. You know, I've been the number one guy who said we must buy Plymouth Township, we must buy in our, in our township first. Well, guess what? We bought prisoner food and it's 70% cheaper outside the township. Congratulations, Chief. You saved us $290. You did a heck of a job. I found out that all the municipalities use this other company. You did a beautiful job. Go anywhere you want to to save 70%. I'm all for that. And the last item, people wonder, what do we spend money on? Guess what? If we get a stray dog, if we pick up a stray dog in this township, the police deliver it to the.
Huron Valley.
Huron, Huron Valley Humane Society, we pay $100 to deliver a dog to the Humane Society.
We pay the Humane Society?
We pay the Humane Society. So when people say, well, what do you guys spend money on? Okay, well, we got a stray dog, we're delivering him, we pay $100. I just want you to know, we're not just throwing money away, we're doing this for stray dogs too, so.
The prior practice is when the dog was claimed, the owner paid the $100 bucks. Is that still the case? All right. So we're getting reimbursed, I hope, if Rover was found by his owner.
Okay. Any other questions on item D? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Supervisor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Borba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 My mic is still low. I mean, it's not, it's a little too low. Next is item E, Public Comments and Questions. This is not your only opportunity during the evening to comment on matters before the board. There will also be another opportunity at the end of the meeting before we go into closed session tonight. We also encourage comments and questions on individual agenda items as long as they are relevant and germane to that item and we do have a three-minute rule as well. I see we do have Senator Polhanke here tonight and Dana, would you like to just say a few words?
Any of them?
Sorry, I was a teacher. This is good?
You're going to need it tonight.
Okay, good. Put that on you and then, yeah, it's on. Okay. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. My name is Senator Dana Polhanke. This is not it, this is it. Okay. And I am the Senator for District 7, which is Plymouth Township, the City of Plymouth, Northville Township, City of Northville, Canton Township, Livonia, and Wayne. Thank you so much for welcoming me here this evening. I really appreciate it. I have and will continue to dialogue with Supervisor Heisa and the Council of Western Wayne County about issues that are important to the residents, like the stoplight at Ann Arbor and McClumpha. I will really stress to MDOT the urgency of the completion of that project as early as next year because it's a public safety issue. I've also heard loudly and clearly from our municipalities to not pass unfunded mandates that will ultimately hurt local governments and I do understand the need for increased revenue sharing as it's, it's at its lowest point in a very long time. I thank you for your service to Plymouth Township and I look forward to working as a partner with you in Lansing to best serve our residents. Please feel free, and anyone can write this down to call me if I can be of help to you or your family. My number is 517-373-7350. And that's all I had for this evening.
Okay. Board members, any questions?
I heard you say that revenue sharing is at the lowest ever?
In, in, for Michigan, for statutory revenue sharing, it is at the lowest in a long period in history. It's very low.
So you anticipate that we're going to receive in 2020 less than we received in Plymouth Township in 2019?
The budget process is still, as you know, being negotiated. If there is some sort of increase, from based on what I've seen, I would not expect it to be substantial or a huge meaningful increase, which is disappointing.
How are we coming on that budget process?
Pardon me?
How are we coming on that budget process?
Well, they're figuring out right now, discussing revenue. Once that's determined, we'll have a better idea of what can be included in our budget. I do believe Michiganders deserve a comprehensive budget and without suffering under a government shutdown. So I hope that we can get it together when I go back from recess tomorrow.
Can you also look into the issue that I asked you about?
I will. Thank you.
Okay. We also have Commissioner Melissa Daub here from Wayne County. She's a regular visitor, so I don't know if you have anything special for us tonight? Okay. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Supervisor and Trustees. My name is Melissa Daub. I'm the Wayne County Commissioner for Plymouth and Canton and I just had some good news. Today in committee, we passed the intergovernmental agreement with Plymouth Township for improvements to the Township Park and Miller Family Park. So that was passed in committee today. Hopefully, if all goes well, we'll pass that in full board next week on Thursday, September 5th. I'd also like to let everyone know that I'm having a constituent coffee hour on this Thursday, so in two days, on August 29th. That's open to all residents of Plymouth and Canton. That's going to be at 7:00 PM, Thursday, August 29th, and that will be in Canton at the Administration Building on Canton Center Road. Additionally, I'll be having a town hall. That's next month, Wednesday, September 25th at 7:00 PM, and that's also in Canton at the summit on the park. And it's going to be called A Citizen's Guide to County Government. I will just be talking about how county government is structured, what the county commission does, what it does not do, the executive side is responsible for, and so forth. So everyone's welcome to come to that. And my office phone number is 313-224-0882 and my office email is district10, and that's 1-0@WayneCounty.com. So please feel free to reach out to me anytime with questions or concerns. Any questions from the board?
I'm thrilled that the IGA for parks is underway and I don't expect any issues with that with the full commission. We're already authorizing projects and spending money on that, so it's just always comforting to know that we'll get reimbursed.
And analogies will be.
No, that's fine. No, that's fine. You've been very good about it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Oh, don't go away.
Oh.
Is the budget complete?
No.
No? All right, well, that's good then. I'd like you to ensure that we receive adequate, hopefully an increase in snow plowing budget for the winter. We haven't been getting a good share, so we need to have more.
Okay.
Especially for secondary roads like Annaber Trail. Of course, Annaber Road is MDOT, but I think the county does the work. We really need to pick up the service in Plymouth Township for road plowing and clearing. We've been neglected over the last few years. It's declined, maybe the whole county, but Plymouth has a lot of important work destinations, so we want people to be to work on time without trouble.
Yeah, we're still holding the hearings on the budget, but I'll check on that and I'll.
Thanks.
All righty. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public at this time? Yeah, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Jason Parko, 10375 Red Maple Ridge. Wanted to come tonight to make you aware. Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. I'll just speak into it. Is that good? Very good, very good. Tonight, kind of wanted to bring forward a basically public safety matter to the Board of Trustees, an experience that me and, and my family, we have gone through. Unfortunately, it revolves a dangerous dog. We've had an occurrence in the community with a dangerous dog and I wanted to come and report that to the Board of Trustees. We unfortunately, our, our dog and my good friend Karen Allen were attacked on May 31st off of Ridge Road by another dog, another Plymouth Township resident. And that, we have now learned that that dog also attacked another family and dog on May 2017, the Patel family, who are also Plymouth Township citizens. Wanted to come tonight, bring it to the board's attention that tomorrow is the sentencing in that case. And we wanted to make you aware of the case, that there is a dangerous dog. And to be honest with you, I wasn't going to do this until I read the story about Emma Hernandez last week in Detroit, which I think we can all agree is absolutely horrifying. And I believe that we cannot allow for dogs and irresponsible dog owners in Plymouth Township. That is not who we are as a city, that is not who we are as a people. In closing, I'd like to thank the Plymouth Police Department, specifically Officer King. She did an outstanding job working with our family. That's all I have.
Was this dangerous dog licensed by Plymouth Township?
I do not know. That was, that would be a police matter. We didn't ask that question.
What's the sentencing for? What's the charter?
So what it is, is the statute reads basically that if the dog is a repeat offender, so we had an attack that required veterinary care to a dog in May 2017. The dog, our dog, required extensive veterinary care and also Karen Allen required medical care. So the fact that it's a two-time offender, it's labeled as a dangerous dog and it's our hopes tomorrow that the dog will be removed from the community.
I see Attorney Kevin Bennett. Do you want to comment or is that appropriate since this is still an open pending matter?
I just, I just want to point out that you have a right to make a claim for restitution. I think I did, I handled this case at court and we did insist that restitution for your veterinary bills and your doctor bills be included as part of the sentencing. And I would suggest that you show up tomorrow with proof of your out-of-pocket expenses.
Yeah, we're, we're prepared to discuss the financial, but to be quite honest, the public safety issue is way more important here. Dawn Allen, who resides with me at 10375, is expecting a child first week of December and after hearing about Emma Hernandez being torn apart by a pit bull last week in Detroit, anything less than removal of the dog from the community will be seen by us as irresponsible by all parties.
Okay.
Usually dogs like this are euphemized or forced to be kept inside their house. If the judge usually rules that way.
Not our, not our determination, right, as the victim, what will happen with the dog?
Well, we thank you for bringing this to our attention and we appreciate your comments. Clearly, our attorney is deeply involved in this case and hopefully we will reach a decision that, that the judge can, can administer fairly to everybody concerned.
Great, thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
All right.
But again, Officer King did an outstanding job in following up. You know, it was, it was really good. It's right down the street and, yeah, we know the owner of the other dog is.
What street did this incident happen on?
Red Maple.
Red Maple.
Red Maple.
All righty. Any other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am?
Please use that little rock by you.
My name's Renee McCarge and I'm a resident on Litchfield Drive, so first of all, I just want to say, coming after that, this is really all money and my heart just goes out to your family, so sorry about that. So on the agenda number two, it is the intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County for the monies that were designated for Litchfield Drive. Clearly, we're disappointed that this project won't happen this year. We've been waiting a long time and understand the reasons for that with the cost overruns and things. But I did have some questions concerning the intergovernmental agreement and so these are my questions and it's probably things that you will discuss tonight. But first, has it been passed with Wayne County? So has Wayne County already passed that resolution and you're just voting on it? And when you do vote on it, are the funds designated solely for Litchfield Drive exclusively? Just a little background check in, it looks like the agreement goes till 2022, so it's an extension of three years, but is that based solely for Litchfield Drive or could that get parceled out to different subdivisions next year? And then my last question is, how long is the SAD agreement that we passed good for? Or will that have to, let's say, the work doesn't get done, let's just say for two years, does the SAD that was passed stand for those two years or does that have to get passed again? Assuming that the price is the same and it comes in, in those, in those terms.
Sure. The intergovernmental agreement tonight has already been approved by Wayne County and it was done at our request back in, I believe it was March or May. We, we, the board, made a decision to allocate the full 2019 amount of 388, 888 to Litchfield. We sent that request off to Wayne County. Wayne County has now sent us a contract. We are going to approve, I hope, that contract tonight. That does lock it in for Litchfield. It's, it's part of the, it's part of the agreement that it is for Litchfield and it does have a time span of two years. It is certainly our intention to place all of that money towards Litchfield to help reduce your costs. Another way that we are trying to reduce your costs is by delaying this project for another year. It's unfortunate, but right now the economy is so strong that they, the contractors out there really control the market and so we did not get good prices this year for that project. So we want to maximize your, your value as much as possible. Everybody wants to get started in the spring and, and have that project completed next year. This, by approving the IGA tonight, we're able to lock in that grant from Wayne County because it's a lot more difficult for us. Melissa Daub is still here, good. It's a lot more difficult for us to go back to the county next year and say that we want that money from last year. It's much easier for us to lock that in now, so that's why we're doing what we're doing.
Okay, and that reminded me, thank you very much. One last question I had that I forgot to write down is, when does it go out for bid next year? Because I know last year it started in April and it seemed like we were behind the curve, so does that something that starts in January or when does that start?
I believe they will go out for bids in, in December, December or early January, but our Township Engineer is not here tonight. I didn't think there was anything for him to, to discuss with us tonight, but that's my understanding that it'll be end of this year or very early next year.
Is there any, could I have the name of the person just to verify that when that would go back out for bid for next year?
Well, it would be Patrick Felrath, our DPW Director, and you can either reach him directly or go through my office.
Thank you.
And those will be, and that will be published in the paper too, so you'll see it in the paper. It'll be on the website. You'll be able to see that we posted for bids and you'll see the deadline when they are supposed to come in.
Okay.
So check our website frequently and you'll see it.
Okay, thank you. And also the SAD, how long is our SAD good for?
Well, the signatures are still valid for the, for the duration of the project scope, which would be, I, at a, at a minimum through, through 2020.
Yeah.
But don't quote me on that, but you are, you guys are locked in at this point to that project.
So if this project, let's just say, cross our fingers, happens sometime next summer, the SAD that we passed already would be good as long as the price comes in, in the time or the span that, that it was designated.
We've already crossed those, those thresholds so that we are now within the, we're basically in the construction phase right now. We're just delaying that phase.
Okay, thank you.
Kurt, is that threat, you're talking about the 10%? The SAD signatures are good as long as you don't exceed 10% of the estimate?
Yes.
So that's, we're still, we came in over that when the bids?
I don't know if we came in over the estimate. I think we just came in at a higher number than, than we were comfortable with. We knew.
I didn't think it was a good value for the money.
We knew that we could do better if we waited.
But if next year it comes in higher than we would have, there's an, there's a chance that the SAD doesn't go through because it's higher than what was estimated.
That, that exists in, in the law right now and that's always a, a chance that we all take, but we're not anticipating that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Don't forget, we can also have discussion at the end of the meeting as well. Okay, we're going to move on to item F. This is new business. Item F1 is the Phoenix Mill Brownfield Plan. Laura Haw. We do have representatives here from Phoenix Mill as well. I don't know if you'll want them to come forward at some point, Laura, but the floor is yours.
Thank you, Supervisor Heis, and good evening, Board of Trustees. I won't go into too much detail on the background of the site.
I don't know if you'll want them to come forward at some point, Laura, but the floor is yours.
Thank you, Supervisor Heisey, and good evening, Board of Trustees. I won't go into too much detail on the background of the site. You have information in the packet, and we've also talked about this at length at other meetings, so I know you're well informed of it. Just briefly, the site is at 15,000 Edward Heinz Drive. It is a historic property from the Ford Motor Company in 1922. And the applicant, Critical Mass LLC, are proposing to redevelop the existing site. And in order to do that, they are requesting a brownfield plan, which would allow for environmental remediation and cleanup on the site, for things such as environmental assessments, hazardous material surveys, the demolition of the two existing metal structures on the site, removal of existing concrete. There's a lot of hard surfaces on the site that will be gone and transformed into a park space, and removal of the diesel underground storage tank, and some lead abatement. Within the brownfield plan that was prepared by PM Environmental that you received in the packet, that has a full breakdown of all the eligible activities and associated cost. They are asking for reimbursement of just over a half a million. Based on the proposal from PM Environmental, the capital investment for the site is approximately 3 million, and there will be 30 temporary construction jobs created, with an additional 20 to 25 permanent full-time positions once occupied. And the estimated taxable value of the development, which once completely rehabilitated, is $700,000. A public hearing was held at the June 10th Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Meeting, where the brownfield plan was considered and approved, and recommended to the Board for ultimate consideration. This plan was also reviewed by the Township Assessor and the Township Treasurer prior to this meeting. There is a resolution included in your packet as well that would authorize the brownfield plan, which is highly recommended, as the Brownfield Authority is really geared towards these transformative projects, where the heritage of our community can be instilled. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is also here this evening to discuss more details of the project and what those would entail and the environmental status. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Any questions for Laura at this time? Bob?
There's an existing underground storage tank that will need to be removed, and once that is removed, then it will be determined if there's any further ground contamination. Is that correct?
Why don't we, you're going to have to introduce yourself, sir.
I'm Greg DiNoprio, Representative of Critical Mass, here with my partner, Richard Cox. So there was a leaking underground storage tank, so it's a closed, lust site, which the soil samples that we analyzed, PM Environmental analyzed around the site were higher than threshold criteria, which would consider it a property for brownfield purposes. So we don't believe that the, that was an old underground storage tank was leaking. Wayne County remediated it. It's closed with the state of Michigan. There is another 6,000-gallon diesel storage tank on the property in a separate area. We don't believe it's leaking, but we haven't pulled it yet. So there's always the potential that we'll find some unknown surprise when we, when we do. No, it's been, it's been emptied out, according to Wayne County.
That's the tank that was installed in 1993.
That's correct.
Low probability that it leaked.
Very, very low.
By then, precautions had been designed in the tanks.
That's correct. And the dispensing unit has been removed, so typically if you remove the dispensing unit, the environmental guys want to be around to make sure that there's no accidental spill from, you know, above ground that's now contaminated the soil above the tank.
Do those tanks have a bladder?
I'm not familiar with this type of tank that's in there. Oh, it's a double wall fiberglass-lined tank.
So you're confident that that's the extent of the... That you're sure that you've got a, that you've got a good response?
We, we don't anticipate in that area where the underground storage tank is running into soil contamination.
Well, based on this report, the site is amazingly clean, considering it's been active for 100 years.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot that we don't know yet, and part of the kind of catch with the brownfield is, you know, you have to make some assumptions based on use, based on the environmental assessments, because if you didn't, let's say, protect for potential remediation issues, you approved the brownfield plan, there's no going back, once it's approved like it has. So because we don't quite know the waste management processes that happened with Wayne County over the years, there's still likely to be many surprises, so...
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
Yes. When you look around there, it says the investment is 3 million. The assessor has a taxable value of, anticipates 700,000, which means a true cash or market value of 1.4 million. You're investing 3 million for a property that's worth half that?
So that investment includes the tenant bill-out spaces, so the restaurant will probably end up spending close to a million dollars in build-out. That's included in the investment numbers. That was part of the purchase and development agreement numbers with Wayne County on how we classify the investment.
So the taxable value of 700,000, 1.4 million cash value, is only based on your investment? Or, because usually when something is taxed, it's taxed on its full cash value, 50%, then it's cut in half to create the SEV, and then the taxable value. So I'm trying to understand the math and the logic behind this. Can somebody help me with it?
Sure. Well, the taxable value, you have it right. At least that's based on our analysis. The investment numbers, you know, I'm not here to maybe defend a wise investment, I guess if that's what you're getting at, but we think...
I'm getting at maybe that our assessor, it doesn't make logical sense.
So that's not from your assessor, right? Your assessor has done the base taxable value of 193,000, because the, the building hasn't been restored yet, so the assessor has nothing to assess. So those are estimations.
So the 700,000 was used to calculate the cash flow from the site, is that?
The...
So it's way under, possibly, if it's successful, the assumptions are way, way under, so it'll be paid off quicker. You'll be paid back much quicker, because the tax increment will be greater.
Sure.
I don't know. If that's not correct, or, or the treasurer, or somebody else, the assessor, are they in the room, can maybe answer the question?
Yeah, just based on the math on, on how the TIF capture is calculated. If the new appraised value is higher, then theoretically, the recapture would be quicker. However, in our plan, based on what we have defined as eligible criteria, we don't get, we don't recapture all of the environmental cleanup. So some projects, you know, they may, they may capture everything that the brownfield says that they should capture within a 26-year plan. We actually would need over 30 years to recapture everything that we could potentially spend in environmental cleanup, so...
So why do you say that, considering the plan that's here? I'm trying to understand that. The plan seems comprehensive, that you've evaluated it, and my quick assessment is, the site is much cleaner than you would guess. So you've aired, you've been very conservative. So I would expect the opposite, that you would have covered everything.
There's...
Or you will be covered for everything.
There are certainly things that could potentially come up that you're not covered for. We know that Wayne County worked on trucks in the building. We know that there could potentially be vapor mitigation issues that...
What kind of issues?
Vapor intrusion. If there was vapor, if there's VOCs under the slab, if that gets up into the building and it, from an air quality monitoring standpoint, is higher than a certain threshold, then you have to install either passive or active mitigation systems. So this could cost a lot of money to do. So I wouldn't say that the plan is covering every potential possibility. But, you know, back to the point of, it's just math on how the recapture, the TIF works, in that the total amount to be captured, based on, we can't capture non-capturable millages, we're not capturing school taxes on non-eagle activities or DEQ activities. So that, if we were allowed to capture over more than 30 years, we would. So what happens is, there will be about 100,000 or so of environmental cleanup costs that we will still incur, that will not be recaptured after the end of the 30 years.
So the 3% interest that's in here, that's what the brownfield will be paying you for fronting the money?
That's correct, and that 3% is set by...
Law. MEDC's cookbook or something. I have one more question. Did you receive a tax bill in July for the property?
We did receive a tax bill in July. We will certainly pay it on time, so...
You'll get another one in December?
Yeah, probably two a year.
All right, good.
All righty, any other questions from the Board? Any questions or comments from the public? Very good. Hearing no further questions or comments, I don't think the applicants have anything else to say, so I would entertain a motion on this item. Jack, would you like to do that? Mister Historian?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2019-08-27-74, authorizing the brownfield plan for the Henry Project, Phoenix Mill Redevelopment PC Application Number 2338-0519.
Motion is made by Trustee Dempsey, seconded by Trustee Kermy. Mister Clerk, please take the roll.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorshavitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Motion carries.
Very good.
Thank you.
Congratulations and good luck. We're looking forward to this. All right. Next is Item F2, the intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County for Litchfield. I've already had some of my thunder stolen already tonight on this item, so I think we all know why, why this is on the agenda. The county did return us a, an IGA, which has been reviewed by the Township Attorney. This will lock in the money for Litchfield, which we do anticipate will begin construction next year, once we get some more favorable weather and some more favorable bids as well for the benefit of the homeowners. So any questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion. Mister...
Mister Supervisor?
Mister Clerk?
I move to adopt Resolution 2019-08-27-75, authorizing the supervisor and clerk to sign the inter-agency agreement with Wayne County for the Plymouth Notch-Litchfield Road Special Assessment District Road Reconstruction Project.
Thank you. Motion is made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Heitman. Mister Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorshavitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Next is Item F3. This is the Fee Schedule Amendment Resolution. Mister Vorba?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Mister Supervisor, and members of the Board. This is something that I mentioned a while back. One of the things that we've discovered here in, at the Building Department and at the Clerk's Office, is that sometimes we've had delays in, in having people record all the necessary documents in order to move through the building process, and in order for the Clerk Department, and that is the Township, to have retained with it proper documents that are recorded. As a matter of fact, in, in the past couple of years, we've run across situations where we found documents that, several years old, that were not recorded. Sometimes this is, is, you have developers or builders taking the documents, saying they will record them, and they lose them, or they're delayed in doing it. Sometimes it's the, sometimes it's done by the engineering firms, and what we've, what we found out is that we need to have a better control over this whole process. And I've been working very hard with Sherry and the Building Department, and we've come across the process that I discussed before, which is e-filing. And we have looked at several different companies, and we came upon a SimpliFile e-file system, and we talked with a wonderful representative, Michelle Wilsley, who was a former clerk in her younger years, and she's the Regional Director for, for this service. And what we do is, we gather all the documents, we send them to SimpliFile, and they then send them to the county for recording, and they ensure that everything is done properly. If it's not done properly, we get a notice, and then we can correct whatever needs to be done. We are charged $3 for this filing fee. And, and then, of course, there are fees that are set by the county for filing, like so much for the first page, so much for every other page. SimpliFile pays all of this upfront, and then sends us a bill. And the beauty of this is that we immediately know that what is done is correct, and that we get the library page and the recordation, and we have control of it immediately. And so what we need to do is to create a, a charge in our, in our system for, for, for this, and we've come up with the fee of $35. And this really is, saves the developer or, or the engineering firm a lot of time and money in doing so. And then it's all passed through and taken out of any kind of escrow or bond that we have held at the Township. So we know we're going to get the money, and it's a, it's a wonderful system, and we've been testing it out here over the past month, and we feel this is going to be good for the Township and good for the developers and everybody else who has a business with the, with the Township. And we would ask that we create this fee in our administrative processes, so that we can start charging for that.
Okay, any comments or questions?
What are you going to do with the documents that you found not sitting on attorneys' and engineers' desks?
Well, we're going to gather them up and, and record that we've been doing that.
So you're going to go back and do a rear search?
We're going to go back and do a rear, as we can. I mean, if we, if we can find the people, we will do that. And we've been in the process of doing that, and, and it's been working out rather splendidly.
We're, we're learning very quickly to the township department, because if they reject the documents, they're going to try and reject it. We now understand what the law of the county is looking for, and now the documents can be learned, too, if they have it so. The documents come to the building department, we'll look them over, and we'll actually report them. So it's unlikely that you have escrow money left, so we're going to do this at our own expense?
Yeah, well, that would be, that would be necessary. I mean, if you want, you want to have the, if you can't go back and find the person to get money from, you still need the recorded documents. They still need to be done properly. And so we've been doing that, and so we think it's, we think it's a great benefit to developers and anybody else doing business with us, that we record these liens, we record all these documents, and, and we know that it's done immediately. The county has set up the system. The SimpliFile is working very closely with the, with the county, and it's a very smooth and seamless process, once you've got the, once you've got the hang of it. So we'll have all the documents that we really need.
That could be some rather significant...
That could be some rather significant issues if documents were not recorded properly when they should have been. That could create some serious problems for people.
Well, on transfer, if you file these documents now, if somebody's in the process of a land sale or a transfer, he could hold it up.
It can, but the way that, way that is corrected is, is a process of people recreating the document and making copies and paying a fee to get it done.
What kind of documents or what, like, what's some example?
Storm, we're recording storm drain agreements, which we definitely need recorded because that has the landowner being responsible for all the storm drains. If we don't get those recorded, eventually it'll come back and fall on us, so we don't want that. So it is better to record a document, let's say we have a couple there, we just recorded one from 2015, to have it on the record. It's now recorded, we're now protected as a township. Okay, it's going to cost us $39. We have a program set in place now, a process that we won't run into this problem again, but the township will have to eat a few of these costs, so to speak.
Yeah, I mean, they got to be recorded.
Where are we at? We do storm drains, water mains, sewer, cluster housing agreements.
Easements.
Yes. Master deeds, bylaws.
Was that the Clerk's Office that was responsible for it?
Yes, that's correct.
Go figure. What, how many are there roughly?
Right now, we have pretty much recorded everything that we have found actually in the Clerk's Office. Dave Richman is going to go back and look at if he has anything else. And right now, we're also into like a process of, we have to have assessing, look at these properties, tell us what's been recorded and what hasn't been, and then we have to try and find those documents or recreate them and then go back and find signatures. And it is, but this, this new...
It's got to be done.
It's got to be done to protect the township. And then it's also, we will then have total control of all the documents from the time that they're first signed, all the way through the recording process. And then the Clerk's Office actually keeps, because we print off the recorded document, which has, you know, the LIBR on each page, and then that is attached with the original signatures, and it's held in the Clerk's Office, so that way we always have all of the documents.
So are they stored by that original date?
Backdated, in other words.
Further to Chuck's question is make sure that when we look at it, we know it's 2015, it's not 2019, you know, and...
The documents themselves all have the correct dates on it. Like the one from 2015, the document itself is made up as 2015, the recording date is 2019, obviously. I'm not sure, Diane, how you are filing them.
What if there was a property transfer? What's the implication of that? You had something that was not recorded.
Well, it would depend on whether they got title work and did someone catch it.
If it was a lien or something, it could extinguish it.
Well, for instance, Brembo Brakes, they, this exactly happened with Brembo Brakes. The water main easement was not recorded. When they, Brembo Brakes purchased, before they were leasing, they actually purchased their building, their attorneys found the water main was not done. They contacted us, hey, this water main easement was never recorded, we need this done, so that is now what is being done. The paperwork was drawn up. It's going to be at the next board meeting on the agenda for the board to accept it, and then it'll be recorded after that.
Well, that building was done in 2008.
Yes, and it was never recorded.
So this isn't, this isn't a new problem?
No.
And the Township Attorney's Office and the Engineering Office have some equity in what went on, from what I can tell.
Well, back then, it was Dietrich Bailey, who we no longer use, so I'm not quite sure anything that they have.
At that time, somebody bought that company, which is the current Township Engineering Company, bought Dietrich Bailey.
Spaulding Decker.
So when that comes, the job and the risks.
Yeah, well, what has happened is there was a, just a rather loose process of getting these done. Sometimes the developers say, oh, hey, I'll take them down, I'm going to, I've got to record some other stuff. They take it down, they lose it, they forgot, who knows what. And so it's so loose, this is tightening it up, and so that we have actual control of the process because we're the ones that need to...
Who's writing the process down with a flow chart or something?
Yeah, we do. We have, we have...
So that we have it somewhere for the next employee?
Exactly. We have two people and myself trained on this process right now, and then we will have that all set up for any employee that comes in, and it'd be, it'd be part of the process of recording things.
This is a good thing. What we're doing is a very good thing, and it's very positive.
It is. Congratulations.
And 35 bucks is really a, I mean, considering that a developer or the engineering firm or the law, would have to drive all the way down to Detroit to do it, and so it's a, it's a real value to them, and then we have control of the process, and we think it's a fair...
And actually, they are dancing in the street that we're taking this over.
They're loving this.
They, the, anybody who has to go down to the county is like, oh, thank you for doing this, we will give you this money. Because they have to drive all the way down there, they have to park, they've got to stand in line, they get to the window, they look at the document, and then they reject it. Here, we e-file it, they reject it, they tell us why, we can fix it, e-file it again, they reject it again, they tell us why, we fix it again, and then they accept it. It's saving them, back and forth, back and forth.
And we're not charged until it is done.
Recorded.
And we only charge that one time. We're not charged each time.
So you anticipate the $35 covers the labor incentive in the township?
Exactly. That's right.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions on this item?
Wonderful job.
Anything else, Sherry? Thank you very much.
And thanks to the county for having this system, too. I mean, so...
Yes. All righty. I move to adopt Resolution 2019-08-27-76 authorizing the addition of a $35 administrative fee for document recording and to add this fee to the comprehensive fee schedule. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kirmey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Next, we're going to move to Item Four, which was the old Item Five. This is the AT&amp;T Metro Act Permit Renewal. Mr. Bennett?
Okay. The Metropolitan Extension Telecommunications Right-of-Way Oversight Act requires telecommunications providers to obtain a permit from the township in order to install and maintain wired telecommunications facilities within township rights of way. Michigan Bell Telephone Company, DBA, AT&amp;T originally obtained a permit from the township in August of 2004. The permits have a term of five years. The township renewed the permit twice since 2004. It is time again for the renewal of the permit. I've been in contact with people from AT&amp;T. The only thing that I need to see is an adequate certificate of insurance. AT&amp;T is working on that. When AT&amp;T submits an adequate certificate of insurance that complies with the township authority, I will approve that. What we're asking the court to do, or pardon me, what we're asking the board to do is to approve this permit renewal subject to the presentation by AT&amp;T of an adequate certificate of insurance.
Got it. What if we said no?
They'd sue us.
Yeah, they'd sue us. It would go for a hearing before the Michigan Public Service Commission, and the township would not be in a favorable position there.
We wouldn't get the Metro Act fees either.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, we wouldn't get paid.
You mean, the fees from AT&amp;T or the other suppliers?
The way the fee thing works is the telecommunications provider pays a fee, annual fee, to the Public Service Commission, and the Public Service Commission divvies up those fees based on the linear footage of wired telecommunications facilities within each municipality.
Wow.
And then sends out a check every year to each municipality.
So cable is not part of this, this thing?
Cable is...
Fiber optics, excuse me, fiber optics, sorry, wrong.
This is fiber.
Fiber optics or only twisted pairs here, or both?
I don't, it, the nature of the conduit is not what matters. What matters is what it's used for. If it's used for telecommunications, it falls under the Metro Act. If it's for cable TV or internet, it falls under the Uniform Video Franchise Act.
Okay, so some of the telephone poles that still carry twisted pairs are part of this proposal, this thing tonight?
They've submitted a map. I don't know if the map shows where the telephone poles are, and I would assume, I'm not, I'm not a telecommunications expert, but I would assume that most of the telecommunications companies now are using fiber optic cable.
Yeah.
Just because it's much more efficient.
Well, you have copper, but it says copper and fiber.
In other words, it's only the electric utilities that are continuing to use an outdated technology like a telephone pole. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not going to argue with that.
Somebody woke up, Jack.
All righty. So any other questions for the attorney? All right, very good. Any comments or questions from the public? Then I am looking for a motion on this.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Heitman?
I move to adopt Resolution 2019-08-27-77 to approve the Metro Act Permit Application Renewal Request submitted by Michigan Bell Telephone Company, doing business as AT&amp;T, subject to final approval of the Township Attorney of the Certificate of Insurance.
Motion is made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kirmey?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move back to new Item Five, which is Employee Benefits Through MERS. With us tonight is our benefits consultant, Steve Matar. We also have a representative here from MERS if needed. We have also, I know Sherry Parmelchuk is here, she's going to switch hats right now and put on her union hat because she is the head of the TPOM, which represents our clerical and other Township Hall employees. And if, we, we're going to waive the three-minute rule for you tonight, Sherry, just so that you, if you have any additional questions, that you can get them answered or at least addressed in some way. We are, the Township Board is the fiduciary to our employees' defined contribution, which is known as a 401A Plan, a deferred compensation plan, which is also known as a 457 Plan, and the healthcare savings plan. So there's three plans that are administered by three separate providers. And in order to consolidate these plans, and we believe to save substantial money for our employees, Corporate Benefit Solutions, Treasurer Clinton, Finance, former Finance Director Cindy Kushner and I have been working for nearly two years on a strategy to fully switch over management of these plans to a new provider, which we have defined as the Michigan Employee Retirement System, also known as MERS. MERS currently administers our defined benefit plan and some of our union's existing defined contribution plans. We've held several meetings with our union officials, I see, I have at least five that I can, that I can think of, with both union officials and non-union employees, such as department heads and appointees, to explain this proposed switch over with representatives of both MERS and the incumbent 401A provider, which is Burnham and, which is John Hancock, and it's handled by Burnham and Flowers. Steve Matar from Corporate Benefit Solutions is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have and give us a presentation. We are, we are basically on this agenda item, we're basically in study session mode, we are not, we're not going to vote on anything tonight. If the board is satisfied with what they're hearing and seeing tonight, it would be my intention to bring back a series of resolutions to the board at our September 10 meeting. These resolutions are required to effectuate the switch over from the three, three plans that are administered by three separate companies and bring them all over to MERS. We also have some other boilerplate and administrative resolutions that we have to approve that, that will be self-explanatory at that time. They're not before you tonight, but they are, they are in my possession, and depending on what happens tonight, and if, I don't know if there's any other tweaks that can be made, but those resolutions are ready to go when you are. So Steve Matar is here tonight, and I believe he has a PowerPoint for us as well, and he's going to walk us through this, this process, which has been going on for some time. Let's make sure he's got the right microphone tonight. I don't know. Nope, he doesn't.
A little one here?
Either hold it up, or maybe you can clip it. You might want to clip that one since you're going to be talking for a while.
All good?
Is that good?
All right.
Can you hear him? Okay. All right, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I just kind of want to reiterate that, you know, I'm here in a consultancy position tonight. My company is Corporate Benefit Solutions. We handle the group health, life, disability, dental, vision for the township. And with regards to that, we also do a large amount of retirement plan services out of our, out of our office. I feel very qualified to discuss this as I am a registered representative with Sigma Financial Corporation. We do a lot of business in the private sector, 401Ks, 403Bs, those types of things. So I come here with some expertise. Over the course of time, our services to the township, we were engaged to do an analysis of the current program versus what could be out there, potential savings to the township, especially in regard to fiduciary responsibilities and things like that. So we did that. We presented it to Supervisor and the Treasurer here, and it gained some traction. There were some other union leaders that said they were interested in knowing more. As Kurt alluded to, the, the MERS representative came in because that became the, the obvious choice from, from a lot of reasons, and did a presentation, several presentations, many presentations, and answered a lot of questions. One of the questions that came up, of course, is can we see the incumbent as well? So they came in, but we'll get into some of that in the PowerPoint. But I wanted just to press upon you that, yeah, I clearly have no affiliation with MERS, with John Hancock, with Nationwide, with ICMA. I get no renumeration from any of them. I have no horse in this race whatsoever, okay? I'm just here to give you what I perceive to be the facts, and you can digest it how you see fit. Again, having been in the retirement plan space for a long time, I could certainly come to you and say, boy, I would like your business. I would like to solicit your business for the, for the 403B, I'm sorry, for the 457 and the 401A, and, and make a pitch for that. But I, when I first came on as a consultant, I immediately told Supervisor and Treasurer that they could do no better from a, from a cost perspective, in my opinion, than going with MERS. So that's how things got started. But that's a little bit of background. If we go to the next slide here, yeah, kind of an extent, whoop, sorry, one more. There we go. So I've covered most of this already, but just wanted to reiterate that our, our intention here is to make a case that the township should move to MERS, and again, that's for you to decide. If we flip to the next slide. You know, MERS, if you don't know about MERS, MERS is a, you know, the headquarters in Lansing, they are a nonprofit company, which is first and foremost jumps up at you and says, okay, if a nonprofit, where's, do we have profit in our plan now? And the answer is yes, that adds cost to your plan, right? So MERS provides the administration for approximately 950 municipalities in the state, which is a huge number. And you can see the numbers up here, 11 billion in assets, $100,000 in participants. MERS is somewhat unique, if we slip to the next slide, that they only serve Michigan municipalities. This is their deal. And you're a member of the system of MERS, you're not a member of the corporation, you're a member of the system, so you're in bed with all these other municipalities. You get tremendous buying power because all 950 municipalities are buying into the same buckets of money. That gives you economies of scale. You have a very large plan here at the township, but it's not anywhere near the size of the MERS bucket, right? So that's a big deal. Also, an interesting additional benefit that MERS has is that MERS members can transfer time from township to township. And what that means is that if I worked at, you know, the city of Plymouth, and I wanted to come work here, I, after I work here for 12 months, I'm able to take my numbers of years of service here to count towards my vesting. What does that mean to you? That simply means that you are able to be more attractive to other employees that you may want to go out and get who have what MERS calls MERS time, to be able to say, hey, you won't lose your vesting schedule as long as you're here for a year. Hey, great. You know, in my opinion, that's a, that's a big lure, all right? So it could work for you. It could conceivably work against you as well. Somebody could snipe your people away the same way, but it makes it easier because many, many municipalities have MERS. What do we have here? So one of the key things that Kurt talked on, on the next slide, is fiduciary responsibility. Currently, you don't have, I don't believe, and I'll have to double check myself on this, that you don't have any fiduciary coverage, meaning that you, as the Board, are responsible for saying, hey, this is a good plan, that our investments are good, that our fees are good, you are responsible for this, you're responsible to the members, you're responsible to the township. That's a big deal, right? We live in a very litigious society, and, and people go crazy out there. So it's, it's an interesting thing. Other providers can add a level of fiduciary protection, commonly known as a 321 level of fiduciary protection, which is good, but it still leaves you as a co-fiduciary, alright? So you still have skin in the game. And this is important to you, from my perspective, because you won't all be here forever. Boards come, boards go, people get elected, in and out, not that you wouldn't want to be here forever, but, but boards come and boards go. And so you're leaving a legacy to boards behind you, if you make a move to MERS, because a move to MERS means that they own 100% of the liability, alright? They become the fiduciary. You are not a co-fiduciary, they are the fiduciary. The only responsibility you have is make sure money gets there, other than that, they take care of everything. So that's a big deal. And again, that sets the table for future boards to say, hey, we're, you know, it's, it's sort of on autopilot with respect to who's in charge of costs and fees. So we like that. Benefits to you of provider consolidation are, A, better pricing, which reflects itself to every member, every employee of the township. You would have one vendor versus several, so instead of sending money to John Hancock and to Nationwide and to ICMA, it goes to one vendor through one portal, it's easier. There's no need for employers to sign off for distributions or withdrawals, it's all done through MERS, they handle everything, again, they are the fiduciary, so you kind of alleviate some of the administration work that would be on your plates, that is currently on your plate. You also have a little bit more productivity and efficiency in that, instead of having three different vendors to come in to pitch to your employees, hey, we're going to have an education meeting from Nationwide, great! And then next month, it's, hey, we're going to have an education meeting from ICMA, great! And so people are taking time off work, it's in and out, it's this and that, they have different platforms, they have different rules and regs, and so you say, wow, this is a little confusing. With respect to MERS, you can have one education meeting, because it's one platform. So employees can multiply their time. If you wanted to have three education meetings over four months, that's just a continuation of the same, and more and more people can come and get the same message, as opposed to having three different vendors coming in the door. So it's a much easier way to do that. You also get one quarterly statement, instead of three. So from an employee's perspective, the average employee, trust me, has enough time figuring out one statement, but figuring out three statements is difficult. Well gee, I'm in this fund over here, I'm in this fund over here, and what's my rate of return? It can be confusing, for sure. And so you're eliminating all that by giving them one statement that has all their products on there, and all their investments, a total sum of their dollars, and they can go online and look at all their money in one place, they can do all the retirement planning in one place. So Nationwide and Hancock, great companies, ICMA, great company, and they all have retirement planning tools, but you have to input all your data, and you have to bring it all in to be sure that all your assets are there, with MERS, it's all there. So their retirement planning tool is a simplified version of everything, and it's like, hey, I, I've got this down. So it's a little cleaner. Okay, so, again, one login, one website, pretty easy. Other benefits to participants are lower costs, and this is key, alright? Right now, the fees are pretty high across the board on all your plans, we'll get into those in a minute. MERS fees are lower across, across all three plans. The, and in addition, the ICMA plan, which is your health savings account plan, has a $25 annual charge, which is not humongous, but it's a $25 fee that participants pay, for no particular reason. MERS does not have that fee, you know, so why, why pay it? There's added protection, especially, which is very, very important to your employees on the ICMA plan, again, this is the health savings account plan for the newer, relatively younger folks who are coming up the pipeline, who don't get retiree healthcare. They're, you know, they get allotment every pay into this account that they invest for themselves, and that's going to be their pile of money when they retire for, for healthcare. So that account currently with ICMA does not allow for primary or contingent beneficiaries beyond your immediate family. So let me explain that. So if I'm a, if I'm a person working here, and I have a spouse and some kids, great, I retire, my spouse gets my money, that's how you'd think it would go. And if my spouse predeceases me, my kids get my money, as long as they are not through the age of qualification, which in this case is age 26. So if my kids are all 30, 40 years old, my wife dies, then I die, what happens to my money? It comes back to the township. It goes away from my family, even though it was my money. And while that's good for the coffers of the township, it's really bad for the employees. And so you say, hey, that's not really fair. It's not. MERS says, hey, you can name anybody a beneficiary that you want. So certainly during your lifetime, and you have a spouse and kids who are eligible, they get your money, but once your kids age out, or perhaps your spouse dies and you're a, you're a single person, you can name anybody you want to be your beneficiary, and that money will continue wanting to go to them. This makes sense, right? So that's, for me, that's really key, that's a huge, huge deal. You can also, you know, participants can draw out money without having to involve the employer, so no one has to know their business if they want to take money out of the plan. And they get, as I mentioned earlier, some of this stuff's a little redundant, but you know, just the, the website gives you, of course, one-stop shopping for doing your analysis and that sort of stuff, so that makes it much, much easier to the participants. Yep?
Our current plan requires someone in the township to sign off on an early withdrawal?
Yes. It's just-
That's for 457 and 401A, or just?
No, it's for the healthcare.
Oh, for, well, healthcare, that's a small thing. I'm talking about 401A and 457.
And the 401A, yes, I believe that's correct, I'll have to defer to, to John on that. Or maybe, yeah, maybe Jeff could answer that question. Okay.
Do you call that an in-service withdrawal?
There are in-service withdrawals, and also retiree withdrawals, but yes, that would be, as an example, an in-service withdrawal. Yeah. Yeah. And as, and as Jeff points out, there are, there are ways to, there are ways to amend your current plan, it just never has been. And we'll talk about that in a second, some other additional things. So the next section we're going to get into is your, the structure of your menu, and I say your menu, which is all your fund selections. And it's a little weedy, okay? So it's a, it's sort of a statistical proven fact that too many options cause what we call analysis paralysis. You know, it's like, when, when General Motors went to Fidelity, whatever it was, 20 years ago, and they opened up the world of every thousand, thousands of mutual funds, participation went down. Why? Because people looked at that and said, I don't know what to do, there's too much stuff here, right? The average 401K plan has somewhere between 20 and 30 funds, some have way less than that, some have more, but most are in that neighborhood, right? Because you have to narrow the field a little bit, or people just don't know what to do. With regards to some of the effects of that, and then there's been some interesting studies, and there's all kinds of interesting stuff out there, but if you go look at this, you know, and you have, when you have too many choices, you just, you will find that people will do nothing. Limit the choices to a half a dozen or so, you know, just, I'm talking about just picking something off a shelf, you'll find that in many instances, yeah, using a grocery store analogy, which, which is in the next presentation, but sales go up, because people, oh, there's three kinds of jelly, I'll buy that one. If there's 12 kinds of jelly, I can't decide, and you're down the aisle. That's what happens. People get stuck. And in the investment world, people chase yesterday's winner, alright? That's a big deal. So when it says lower investment results up here, if you've got 100 different funds to choose from, and you don't know anything about investing, and you don't have a really smart Uncle Bob to help you pick those stuff, or a financial planner, you're going to go, what's the best return? And you're going to chase yesterday's winner. Chasing yesterday's winner is the worst possible thing you can do, because you're buying high, and when that doesn't perform in the next year, you're going to sell it when it's low, and then you're going to buy tomorrow's, yes, tomorrow's winner. So you're continually buying high, selling low, which is exactly the opposite of what you should be doing. That's what the average investor does. That's what happens when you have a universe of choices. It still happens in a microcosm, but it's, that's, we see that predominantly when, when we have too many choices. So it's a big deal.
So what's the alternative to that? So-
The alternative, right, great question, is to sort of skinny things down a little bit. So what we try to do is say, hey, let's, let's limit initially the amount of choices to make it very easy for participants to say, okay, I've got, you know, a dozen or 20 different funds to choose from, okay, great. If I want to go outside that box, I can, I have full opportunity to go set up a individual brokerage account, for example, with MERS, I can buy anything on the planet that's available to be purchased, including individual stock issue, if I want to, for a very low, low fee, set up a TD Ameritrade account. So, but you keep the box small, and you keep the box to where, I'm going to ballpark you here, I'm, you know, I don't have statistics to back this up, but somewhere between 70 and 90% of most participants live, which are target date funds, what we call a do-it-for-me solution, where somebody is managing my money for me. So you say, hey, I'm going to put money in the target date fund, and/or a portfolio of index funds. And indexes, you know, if you, if you, if you watch the markets, it's very difficult for most fund managers to beat the index, they simply don't. Some do, certainly some do, and there's a good handful that do, but most don't. And when you pick a large-cap growth fund, and you put it up against the S&amp;P 500, chances are, it didn't beat the S&amp;P 500, and you could have just bought the index. And year over, year over, year over, year, you might have a good year with the fund manager, but chances are, over the course of time, they're going to fall behind the index. That's just a statistical fact. If you doubt me, go look up Freakonomics or places like that, you know, there's all these different, you know, statistical data that says, wow, that's kind of impressive, why should I ever pick a mutual fund, I should just buy the index? And I'm not saying that you should, I'm just saying that, that it's an interesting, it's an interesting dilemma for most fund managers to try to beat the index.
So if you had three large caps, for example, to choose from in your, in your 401K, why wouldn't you pick the one that has had the best performance over the last 10 years?
You probably would, but if one of those three was the index, let's say you had the Vanguard Admiral 500 Index, one of the best indexes out there, it's in a lot of 401K plans, and you stuck that against any other large-cap growth you'd find in your 401K, most likely, that Vanguard 500 fund is going to be beating the pants off them. You say, yeah, I'll buy the index. But I don't disagree with you, if you had a 10-year track record of somebody, and there are funds, if you had a 10-year track record out there of somebody who was just smoking the index year after year, I'd buy that fund, because there are good fund managers, just that most will fall behind. Yeah. So there's that. Currently, yeah, currently between your three plans, you have 236 fund options to choose from. That's a staggering number, that boggles my mind, alright? So I'm thinking, huh, how can I ever weed through that? The, the most egregious of the group there is the John Hancock Plan, that's your 401A plan, with 157 funds. Again, that's just, that's more than I can comprehend on a regular basis, certainly more than most of your people can comprehend. Only 74 of the 157 have any money in them, that's 47%, have a balance. 49 of those funds have less than 1% of the plan assets, which means people are kind of throwing darts a little bit, or trying to pick a winner, and 2%, or I'm sorry, 2 funds have only 10% of the assets. So it's just a real hodgepodge of stuff out there, and I'm not sure, there's a whole lot of rhyme or reason to it, but certainly is a little bit of overkill there, and I think, again, you have a little bit of analysis paralysis. The 457 plan has 48 funds, again, probably double what we'd like to see, 28 are proprietary funds. Again, what does that mean? That means that they are owned by Nationwide, which means Nationwide makes extra money on those funds, right? Because they are the fund manager, and they recoup the expense ratios. So they're double-dipping on those funds. Alright? It is what it is. 45 of those 48 have a balance, so that is sprinkled around, although 18% of those funds have less, less than 1% of the assets, 4 have greater than 5% of the assets. So again, everything's just sort of shotgunned out in there. Doesn't mean it's bad, it just means it's, you know, we just have a lot of, I think, in my opinion, I think what you'll see is a lot of people just kind of, just 5% of that, 5% of that, 5%, just kind of going down the menu and crossing their fingers a little bit. So I, I don't like that analysis. The 401A, the, I'm the 401H, rather, the Health Savings Plan, has 31 funds, which is okay, that's fine, but all of them are proprietary to ICMA, 100%. Only 11 of them have a balance, 94% of those funds are target dates. Remember I told you somewhere between 70 and 90, and most plans that we see in the private sector are target dates? 94% are target dates. Why? This is a relatively, speaking, a new plan to the township, younger people are in it, relatively younger, and so they're in a position of saying, getting a little bit of education on that and saying, I want someone to do this for me, I haven't been in this plan for 20 years, and sort of just stuck with it, ah, I'm going to deal with the target dates. Now, target dates are available, by the way, in your other plans, but they have relatively small percentages of assets, very small. And again, speaking from experience, the majority of plans that we have, the vast majority of assets are in target dates. Why aren't yours? Okay? Is it because your people are excellent advise, or excellent investment people? I, I, maybe? I don't know, but-
What's a target date fund? Can you explain it?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me for not diving into that. A target date fund is a fund that takes your age and pushes out to when you'll be 65. So for example, it's almost 2020, if I had 20 years to retirement, the appropriate target date by the standards that these investment companies would say, would be, you will be 65 in 2040. So you will be in the 2040 fund. Target date funds always run in five-year increments, so there's, right now, it's a 20, actually, there's a 2015, there's even a 2010 fund, but it'd be the 2020, 25, 30, et cetera, all the way up to now, currently, I think there's a 2065 fund out there for real young folks, who are, have a long way to go before they get retired. And so what happens is, the farther out you are, let's say you're in the 2065 fund, you're extremely aggressive. The people who are managing that money for you, in this case, ICMA, if you're looking at the 401H, are putting you probably 90 to 95% equities, and it stays that way. And in five years, conceivably, it goes down, but it probably doesn't, until you hit about, maybe, I don't know, maybe 30 years out to retirement, I'm just sort of ballparking you here, and then it starts to slowly ebb its way down, and you reduce the amount of equities in the, in the portfolio, you increase the amount of fixed income, bond and cash holdings, and it keeps reducing down every five years. So for example, when you get closer to age 60 to 65, you're maybe, instead of 90 to 95% equities, maybe you're 55 or 60% equities, so that if you run into a buzzsaw in the market, like we saw in 2008, you will still get hurt, you will still lose money, no doubt, but you might not lose 45, 50% of your portfolio, maybe you'll lose 20% of your portfolio. Again, I'm making this up, but it, it's a much smaller hurt, and so what most people do, and I would hazard a guess what most of your people are doing, is they're building a portfolio, and then they never look at it again. And so 20 years goes by, 30 years goes by, and you hit a 2008, on two years out from retirement, and I lost 45% of my portfolio, now I can't retire. So I can't retire, what do I do? I keep working here. So unfortunately, and this is just a reality of life, the older your population is, the more it costs you, in benefits, time off, disabilities, et cetera, et cetera. You want people to be able to retire someday. So that's the way it goes.
So I'm familiar with target, target plans, they have those in my private employer, but how long have they been around?
That's a good question. I would, you know, I think target dates first came into being around the turn of the 2000s, if I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong.
So there's historical data now to show that-
Yeah, maybe not quite that long, maybe 2005, 2004, I don't have a great number in my head, but somewhere around that time. It, it sort of came into play after the tech bubble, certainly, people wanted a response to what we can do. Plan fiduciaries also wanted a response, because the DOL came into play and said, hey, you have to be able to take care of your people in a better way than putting them into a money market. In other words, you have automatic deposits for people, and so if people don't make an election, you know, 30 years ago, people didn't make an election, what was the default? Ah, money market, because money markets were paying something, right? 3, 4, 5%, maybe, you know, back in the 80s, it could have been 8, 9, 10%. So money markets used to pay a reasonable sum, now they pay zero. So the Department of Labor came into play and said, that is not an appropriate place for you, as an employer, to put people's money. So target dates got born somewhat out of that, in the sense that then, the Department of Labor said, this is an appropriate investment, because it's age-based, and it has, in their opinion, you know, government makes stuff up, but, sorry.
Hey, I'm offended.
But this is an appropriate investment for someone of your age, you know, it just, it's kind of arbitrary, but that's what they did, and said, this is what we're going to do- It's just, it's kind of arbitrary, but that's what they did and said, this is what we're going to do for you. And so that's how that sort of came into play.
So there's been, they've been around long enough to show, so you're a big fan of them, obviously.
Well, I'm a big fan for for most of them. There are certainly ones that are better than others, no doubt about it. But for the average investor, the reason I'm a big fan is because people just do not pay attention to their money. And because they don't pay attention, even if you had a choice, let's say, well, I'm a conservative investor. Great, you're in the conservative portfolio, but then you will stay in the conservative portfolio the rest of your time until you make a choice. Or to the point, well, I'm 25, nothing's going to hurt me, I'm super aggressive. Again, and then you'll stay there in a static type aggressive investment for the rest of your life. Someone's managing that money for you, but they're always managing it to a super aggressive portfolio. So that's why we like the target dates, because unless someone wants to engage, you know, when we do our plans with us or with the advisor or with somebody, their own financial advisor, unless they want to engage, they can find themselves in a world of hurt down the road. Whereas, and and target days don't cost any extra. Sometimes they cost less than other types of investments, depending on the plan. So you're able to say, hey, here's a relatively low-cost investment that gives you professionally managed money. Okay, so then we can get into some of, let's see. Yeah, okay, we talked a little bit about what was out there, the MERS menu, the MERS investment menu. I alluded to this, that the MERS plan has 29 total funds. You got the do it for me stuff, which is sort of the, you know, we're going to pick your stuff for you, use the target dates. You can do the help me do it option, which is broken into two parts. You can you can buy an asset allocation model like I described. Hey, I just want to be aggressive, just want to be conservative, and then I can pick my own stuff on the side. I can split stuff up. You can split up stuff any way you want anyway, but there's those help me do it, do it for me, or I'll do it myself. Again, you can mix and match these things, but the I do it myself answers the question that some of the employees here had, which was, oh, the menu is too small. I like 157 funds. Okay, well, you can have 10,000 funds. Just set up a TD Ameritrade account, I think it costs 25 bucks to open, and you pay transactions when you buy and sell, but they're very small TD Ameritrade transaction fees. And so you say, okay, get whatever you want. Now, in reality, in MERS block of business of however many zillions of dollars they have in there, you look at that and you say, how many people actually use the brokerage account? It's like less than 1% or less than 2%, something tiny, tiny, tiny amount.
What percent of your portfolio can you divert to the brokerage account?
100%.
Is there a cap?
100% over $5,000. Is the minimum $5,000 balance, anything above $5,000?
So no cap?
Other than the 5,000.
But that's a minimum, that's a floor.
Yes.
I'm talking about a cap.
No cap.
So, all right, so if you have 500,000 in the account, you can put all 500,000?
You could do that, again, through your personal financial planner. Hey, look at my portfolio, I want to keep 5,000 in the MERS. Direct me what to buy. You can even give your financial planner access to your account and they can trade it for you. I mean, that's, I wouldn't do that, but you could.
But self-directed, you're you're making individual picks, right? You're buying.
If that's your flavor. Right, stocks or mutual funds.
Well, you could also buy other index. You could buy the spiders, S and P 500 index. You could, are you allowed to short in that self-directed account?
I don't think so.
All right.
But you could, for example, you want to buy.
You could buy gold if you wanted.
You could buy gold, gold, gold funds, yeah. You could buy the, you know, the Cadillac of index funds, the, you know, the Vanguard Admiral 500. Beautiful fund, fantastic, four basis points it costs, four basis, you can buy that, whatever you want.
Vanguard's are pretty good funds.
Vanguard's are good funds, yeah. They're not always the best, but they're good funds. Certainly, you can buy whatever you want in there. So it's it's a nice slick opportunity. But again, most people don't do that. Why? Because they don't have the wherewithal. They don't have the time, they don't have the understanding, and they don't want to mess up. And say, well, hey, brother, if somebody do it for me, because that's kind of clean and good, I'll go with that route.
And if I mess up, it's my fault.
There's that, yeah. There's the blame game. Yeah, so there's that in there. I'm sorry, I said 25, 50 bucks a year for the account plus the trade expenses and a 28 basis point charge. So when you add all that up, it's still lower than your current fund expenses, your current portfolio expenses. All right.
The 0.28 is the percent of the balance that's in the account?
Yes. It's an asset charge. Okay. So but if you look at your current expenses, okay, these are current. The current weighted average expense fees in the current 401A defined contribution plan is 127 basis points. MERS comes in all in at 49 basis points. All right, and that's got a, you've got an $8 million balance there. The cost is, you know, when you add that up, that's $62,000 a year of participant money that's going in fees currently. That's a lot.
It is.
The 457B plan with Nationwide has a 1.67 weighted expense ratio versus 44 basis points with MERS. And based on a 6.3 million dollar, by the way, these balances are, these are older balances or newer balances? Yeah, these are, we've been at this a long time, and these are a year-old balances, so your balances are higher now. But based on this, at a 6.3 million dollar account balance, this is $77,000 more a year. So that's what, $139,000 more per year of expenses, just on those two plans. That is the participants' money. Divide that by the number of participants, and that's a lot of money per person.
Do these expense numbers include the, I may not have it correctly, 12, 1B or B1 marketing fees?
Yeah, generally speaking, inside here, there aren't 12B1 fees. They are, they are just sort of an all-inclusive expense ratio.
All right, so we don't, it's not on top of this.
Yeah, right, this is all in. So and then your ICMA, your your Health Savings Account Plan, currently at 1.13, MERS is at 43 basis points, plus the $25 charge per participant per year. So you've got that. Currently, there's a very small balance there, but as that grows, and it will continue to grow, right? Because that's going to be a big bucket of money over the course of time. But that's, again, that's going to be a staggering number when you get, you know, some millions of dollars in there. Currently, you only have about 200,000 in there, so. But that's a lot of money, 141,000 all in of participant money, and that is per year, right? So just rocket that back 10 years. Of course, there wasn't as much money in there, let's be fair about that. But just ratcheting that up over the last 10 years, you're you've got to be well north of a million dollars of participant money. That boggles my mind, right? So I look at that and just go, wow, I.
That's 10% of the current balance in the account.
Yeah, roughly.
There's about $100,000 in there.
Right now, you've got, I'm talking total accounts, your total account's roughly 15, 16 million.
16 million, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not quite, but it's a lot of money, you know? And if you think, if you said to the participants here, hey, let's go backwards in time 10 years and grab a million bucks for everybody, yeah, sure, why not? I mean, I, it's a, it's a big deal. So again, these are based on a year ago's numbers, because we just couldn't continually update, but the money has grown. So investment expenses, the next slide, you know, as I mentioned on the front end, we did, through direction from the board, go to the incumbent and ask for a repricing. They provided that very well, folks at Burnham and Flower, very, very helpful, and provided us with an analysis. And they, you know, it's one of those things where we got to the point where, quite honestly, they they became aware that the township was looking at fees and expenses. Not that they had not tried to reach out previously, but the boards are busy, and I get that. You guys have a lot of fish to fry, you had a lot of fish to fry on the menu tonight. And it's difficult, I think, sometimes for advisors to get an audience, and I don't fault them for that at all. But the the point is that these fees have been high for many, many years. And it wasn't just this year, or last year, or the year before, it's many years. And so nothing seemingly was done to address those fees, at least not to anybody's point of raising a red flag to say, hey, I need to see you because your people are really getting a bad shake here. So they did come back with a very aggressive fee reduction schedule. And the fee reduction schedule that you look at here, the John Hancock has a proposed fee reduction down from the current 1.27% to 0.53 to 0.84. What does that mean? That means depending on what you pick for your investments, you'd have this sort of range.
So they just proposed it, they didn't do it?
Right, it's proposed because we couldn't do anything without approval. That's nothing to blame them for or 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 disparage about, but it's certainly a situation where this became proposed. But it's proposed, these reduction in John Hancock fees were proposed with the understanding that the township would combine both the 401A and the 457 into the one John Hancock plan. Okay, so giving them more money would cause a reduction of fees, which is smart and good. But still, it's it's still more expensive than the MERS proposal. It still, you know, leaves you with.
Is that locked in for how long?
I would imagine, I, you know, I don't know that answer, but I would imagine it's it's locked in for any duration of period of time.
Until you complain.
You've been at the same expense ratio for a long time, and we propose.
So like an Empower is, that fee is going to vary depending on who the employer is and the size of the plan that that employer is carrying with them?
Not so much with you. When you look at these Empower fees, those fees, that 26 basis points, which would be less expensive than MERS, up to 69 basis points, is a proposal that says, based on your plan, that's what you'll get. But the disparity there is what I, as an investor, choose. So if I choose the lowest-cost investment, perhaps the Vanguard Index Fund, which I don't know if that's available, but there's some very low-cost funds there. If I chose that, then I would enjoy the lower 26 basis points. But if you do a like-to-like analysis, which we did, and you look at it and say, hey, people are creatures of habit, they've got their John Hancock menu, they're probably going to do something very similar. If they stay with John Hancock, they'll probably keep exactly the same thing. And if they go to Empower, they're probably going to do something very similar, depending on the menu available. And if you do a like-to-like analysis, in both instances, you're above the MERS cost structure. So you say, well, okay, unless somebody's getting savvy and saying, I'm going to do all index investing, which, by the way, let's think about that for a minute, that's what MERS is offering, index investing, all right? And most index funds, by the way, are within hairs of each other, right? Because they're just investing in the index. It's a set menu.
Burnham and Flower recommend, proposed John Hancock as the umbrella for all three plans. They did not propose Nationwide?
Two plans, they, for two plans, the 401A and the 457. They don't have the the ICMA plan.
But index funds don't directly invest in the index, right? They buy the equities that are trying to mirror the index.
Exactly, they just try to mirror the index. So whatever percentage Netflix has or whatever, Amazon has, by 5% of this, 2% of that, and that's what they try to build. And they can't build it exactly right because the minutia down in the lower 300 is fractional shares. But that's what they're trying to do.
So Burnham and Flower proposed Empower also?
Yes.
Which is what the federal government employees have, it's huge.
Empower is a very good company, very large company.
Great website.
Yep, that's what they're known for, great website. They don't do a lot of personal service, but they do a great website, probably one of the best out there.
I have it.
Yep, it's a good plan. I have nothing bad to say about Empower, I have nothing bad to say about John Hancock. But but the Empower scenario, again, doesn't save the township as much money. Doesn't consolidate all three of your plans into one, because Empower doesn't do the healthcare savings account. And.
But like Empower, any of these, that that fee is going to vary depending on who the employer is and what the size of that employer's.
Yeah, if you said, hey, whatever company you work for versus the township, and you got, hey, let's get similar plans, yes, exactly right. You would get different pricing based on the size of the plan.
So what is, what is, what's, what's good? I mean, what's a good range?
For expenses?
Yeah.
Well, these are all very good expense ranges, all right? So these, these are not egregious, right? Especially the mansion, currently they are, but with these proposed Hancock or Empower plans, those are in the realm of reasonableness, not as good as the MERS plan, not as specific to municipalities and all the other things we discussed. But these are not horrible at all, right?
Where's the MERS number at now?
Uh, I think, what were we at, 43 basis points, 40, let me get it here, hang on.
43.
Yeah. Well, it's based on the plan. Yeah, it's 49 for the for the defined contribution plan, 43 for the deferred compensation plan, and 43 for the health savings plan.
That's based on our employees' investment choices.
No, that, well, yes, yeah, but it's also based on, it's not, to this point here, we're not, we're not basing it on your assets, per se. We're basing it on the MERS block of business.
So so the 457B on the previous slide has 6.3 million in the plan? And currently Nationwide is charging 1.67.
Yes.
MERS is proposing 0.44.
Yes, so, yeah, sure.
So what we provide with a weighted average comparison, we look at per family, we look at how much money within the Nationwide has in these 500 funds, and we multiply that with dollars by the Nationwide fees that they're charging for that fund, and then we would assume they should take that same money and add it to the MERS large cap index, 500.
Yeah.
So that we came up with a weighted average fund expense.
Like-to-like.
So that's based on how the employees are currently managing their money. If they would choose different fund options, those E-rates change a little bit. So our weighted fund average for our entire organization has a plan, which is probably about 44%. We actually reduce our fees since today by about 44%.
So that's, that's a key point right there. So an employee today who has a, has a retirement account investment in, say, a Nationwide investment plan, if this switch was to be made, they would no longer have that option. So they have $100,000, let's say, in a Nationwide targeted date plan that's at a certain return historically. Now they will have a MERS.
Targeted.
Targeted. So what do you say to the employee who likes that Nationwide plan, they're comfortable with it, it's been fine, versus MERS, which they're not familiar with? They're not going to have that option to continue.
That is, that is correct, and that's, that's the same type of dilemma you have anywhere, private or public sector, when when custodians are changed, the population has to move. So you would go from a target date to a target date. They're going to be very similar, they're going to have similar breakdowns, but they won't be identical. And I don't have the data in my head to say that, you know, the MERS target dates are better than Nationwide's or Hancock's or vice versa. I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head. But chances are, they're very, very close to each other. And again, the MERS target dates are index target dates, difficult to beat the index. The Nationwide stuff is proprietary to Nationwide. Interestingly, Nationwide will have a lot of their own indexes in there as well, but they're just higher in fees. So what I would say to those people specifically is, hey, you're going from this target date with, let's just, I'm making numbers up, but 120 basis points to the MERS target date at 40 basis points. So 80 basis point stays in your pocket. We can give them those exact numbers, but every year, if I'm keeping 80 basis points, which is almost 1%, you multiply that over 20 or 30-year career, staggeringly large numbers of dollars.
How many employees are we talking about in this township, employees?
I want to say there's 80-some.
Can I ask a question? I understand some of our employees checked with Nationwide, and Nationwide communicated to them that they could leave, it's voluntary, they could leave their money in there, is that correct?
Not if the plan moves, not if they are current, if they are currently employed, the answer is no.
All right, so.
If the plan moves, the whole plan moves.
All right, so some of the employees believe they can keep their, new money would have to go to the new plan, but the money that they currently have would stay in Nationwide.
Yeah, that is incorrect, because the, if you had individual contracts, everybody had their own individual contract, and there are situations where that is the case, but not your plan, where they're, what they call individual annuities. You might see that in a school district, for example. Some of the, some of the plans like that are individual annuity products. So the district, if the district changes vendors, you can keep that with that particular Nationwide or whatever vendor you had. But your plan is a consolidated plan, so no, they wouldn't have that availability to do that.
Can I ask a question too? Nationwide has a fixed plan that requires a five-year drawdown if, and my language.
20% a year thing.
20% a year.
Like an annuity.
That money, if we were to move, does get locked into this.
Yeah, let me explain that to you. That's a, that's a very good point. That is, okay, so, you know, it's not all roses here, there are, there are some thorns. So with the Nationwide plan specifically. So with the Nationwide plan specifically, they have sort of a ludicrous rule, it's their rule, you know, it's nobody's rule, it's not the township's rule, it's not the government's rule. They say, hey, if you leave us ever, and you have money in the fixed account, and you're not a retiree, come back to retirees, but if you leave us, and that money in that fixed account, we won't pay it out to your new custodian, except we will pay you 1/60th of that per month over the next 60 months. Why? Because we're greedy, we want to keep your money. I mean, that's basically what it boils down to. Because they're using that money and they're floating it. And the reason a lot of people got into that fixed account was it had a relatively high rate of return, but they have just revised their rules and that rate of return is dropping like a stone. So it'll be no favors to keep money in that account. However, two ways to sort of help mitigate that. If you have money in the fixed account, you can, in this year, you can move 20% out today, good, out. Come next year, before the plan goes into blackout, assuming you move to MERS, before, you can move another 20% out. So now you've moved 40% out. So you've got a big chunk of your money out, the balance of it, the 60% there, has to sit there for that ridiculous five-year period of time. Now, people who are in that plan probably aren't too bothered by that, because they're in the plan because they're a little nervous about the market, or they're just want to have a fixed rate of return. Okay, that's fine, and they'll keep that for the next four years. Now, if you are a retired person, and you have money in the plan, now, prior to the switch, you will be contacted by MERS, not by me, but by MERS, direct reach out, outbound calls, and letters to say, hey, you as a retiree can move 100% of your money out of that fixed account if you want to, prior to the change. Great, get me out. Or they say, no, I really like it, I want to keep it in there for the next five years. Okay? And then it will slowly trickle out 1/60th per month. So retirees are good, active employees have a little pinch on that, right? And I'll say it now, and I'll probably say it at the end of closing, but, you know, when you look at the overall pluses of this move, I sort of look at it, and again, there's no perfect plan for everybody, but, you know, the good of the many by far outweighs the good of the one of the few. And there's a few people that will be impacted. Another impact to the plan, and again, it's in here, we didn't quite get to it yet, but see if maybe it's the next slide, hang on.
In-service distributions.
Okay, yeah, the second to last slide, I think, there we go. Yep, in-service distributions, thank you, way ahead of me.
Is this the same as hardship or something else?
No, this is just saying, hey, if I'm over, currently, I think it's over the age of 60 here, I can, with John Hancock, I can just go and say, I want $10,000 out of my account. And John Hancock says, okay, here's 10,000 bucks.
And pay tax on it.
Yeah, you pay tax on it, it's like ordinary income in that year, you just take a distribution. In-service means you're still working, but don't take some money out of my plan. Great, no problem. They allow that. MERS does not. All right, so there's a bit of a hiccup there.
As long as you're working.
Yeah, if you're in-service, right, working, you can take a distribution, it's fully taxable to you. John Hancock does not allow, currently, you could add this, but they do not allow for loans to your plan, all right?
MERS doesn't?
No, John Hancock doesn't. MERS does allow loans. Again, you could add that to your Hancock plan as well. But MERS says, okay, instead of an in-service distribution, you can take a loan, you pay yourself back the interest, which is prime plus two. So you're paying yourself back, it's like within a 401K, a lot of you are familiar with that, so, hey, I'm paying myself back the interest, okay, great. You know, we never recommend loans anyway, but you could. You take money out of the plan and pay yourself back. You need to buy a new boat, take the money out. So you're good to go. I mean, you could still have access to your money, it's just a different distribution method. So you can have that.
But when you take a loan, that principal that you're borrowing against then is frozen, right? It doesn't continue to grow. Let's say that, let's say that you had 100% of your money in a mutual fund, and that mutual fund was, you know, returning 8% a year or something.
Right.
It was doing really well or something. And you borrowed against that, the portion that you borrowed-
Is out of the market.
Yeah.
Right, just as if you took an in-service distribution, the money's out of the market.
It's out of the market.
Unless you reinvested it somewhere. And you could do the same thing, you take a loan and, you know, buy Amazon stock, you know, and hey, it did great, and I'm making a lot more money than I was over there, I'm good to go. Or you can buy Amazon stock inside your MERS portfolio. But, yes, it is out of the market.
You recommend against loans even when somebody needs the money?
Well, if you need the money, you need the money. But yeah, I like to always advise people when we're doing plans to say, you know, your retirement plan is your money of last resort, you know, it's your retirement money. And as you're pointing out very succinctly, you're taking money out of the market, you're having to pinch your paycheck to pay more money in to pay off the loan. It's not great, loans are not the best solution. But some people have to. You're in some type of tough situation, or you need the money, okay, it's there, go get it. But we discourage loans. Yep.
I've read your plan document, and I thought I saw 50 out of the after-in-service, but one of the employees passed about 65. Would you be able to-
Yeah, I have two comments at the end, I can try to nail for one, you away with 25.
For in-service.
There's been a plan document that can be changed, that's changed over the years. Just for the in-service, for the question on-
Wow.
The in-service role being signed off, that is a plan document that was created by the board and township years ago, that's evolved over the years, it can be changed again. A lot of questions.
But currently, interestingly, there are two employees who have this year and last year taken in-service distributions. So although this is not allowed under the MERS plan, we were able to gain from MERS a grandfathering for those two employees who took distributions this year, so that they wanted to continue to do in-service distributions, they could do that, just no new employees can take an in-service distribution.
What does that mean, they would continue to do, it was a one-time action for those two people, right?
They may need it on an annual basis.
If you're taking in-service money, you can take it whenever you like, as long as you're eligible by age.
So those two, these two people would be grandfathered such that they could take more in-service distributions if they wanted, under MERS?
In the future, yes.
Without 70 and 1/2.
They didn't want to be taking like any of them.
Yeah.
And so we review our plan, our management, because we want to grandfather it for our business, so we move forward, new employees without people.
Except for those listed. So those two employees don't have to be limited to those five scenarios, I think, for any scenario. But there are those five scenarios for all employees under the MERS plan.
And then there would still be the hardship under the 457 if they qualify for that, so really for those few people that might be impacted while we have an encourage loan, the workaround could be to allow loans into the type of future plans that the folks that they needed it, could take a loan out into the open, and so it's relaxed, it's about having to factor in the fact that maybe that couple, two or three people that follow that habit could take it.
What does the first point mean? Withdrawal of eligible rollover funds? MERS allows in-service under-
You need to be vested in certain instances in your money, so non-vested monies would not be eligible.
So if an employee rolled in a 401A from a previous employer, their 401A plan, they would be able to take a distribution on that?
Take that out. You can do that, yeah.
Distribution, real quick, there are a couple questions from employees. So if you're currently working past 70 and 1/2, which you may have, there are, they have to, you are to start taking out distributions, so they have to, they don't have to. And currently, we can use the correct.
Say that again, please? I missed that.
You're talking about RMDs? We should probably have him come up.
They are.
In case other employees want to listen to this tomorrow or whatever, right?
Sure.
So you said if they're currently working, they-
They have 70 and 1/2.
They don't have to take an RMD?
Qualify money that's put in there, you don't have to.
So that's your required minimum distribution age, it's 70 and 1/2.
Well, that's an IRS rule.
Yes.
Yeah, I never knew that, if you were still working, you didn't have to.
If you're still working, unless you're a business owner, but yes.
Unless you're a business owner.
Yes. Then you have to. So we did skip over one slide, if we want to go back one, just overall investment performance. This is inclusive of all fees, everything all in, and you can look at 1, 3, 5-year averages. Again, we're using similar portfolios, you know, they're close some years, they're way off in some years, but in almost every instance, except two, the all-in performance on the MERS portfolio outstripped the current portfolio, again, the current weighted lineups. And that's just something to think about, right? So you're getting more money of your money in your pocket. So summary, just, you know, reviewing the plan providers, for us, for me, MERS became a clear choice. I, you know, again, I don't have any animosity towards your current providers, I just think that the benefits to the board specifically, getting out from under your fiduciary responsibility, which is a big deal, the ease of administration from your admin people here to go onto one website, and we've heard from your HR folks telling us specifically, it would be so nice to have one site to go to, as opposed to three or two, the ease of retirement planning, the login, the consolidated statements, all the things that are on the board there, lower investment fees, better returns, the MERS to MERS time, the attractiveness to bring people into the township, et cetera, et cetera. It just kind of goes on and on. It's very difficult to beat this. And trust me, if I could beat this, I would bring you a plan that would beat this. I would love to have 18 or 16 million dollars of assets in our portfolio, I can't do it. So that's our take. Any other questions for me?
Well, the brokerage option gives you infinite selection.
Yeah.
Down to individual stocks, if you wanted to get that refined.
Yeah, you might have one person here that does that, but yes.
Or you could buy Vanguard index funds from TD Ameritrade.
Exactly right.
Steve, can you talk briefly about how, if we went in this direction, how the transition would work? Would MERS map the investment options for us, or would it be up to the employees to map moving to a different option?
It'd be both. So the money, we could just say, hey, this is what's going to happen to your money if you do nothing, or if you're proactive and want to do something different, you can make that election ahead of time. But for the most part, what we recommend is let's let the money come in, and we do a, you know, a target date solution mapping, because again, that's probably the most appropriate for most of your people. And day one, they can go in and do whatever the heck they want with their money. So if they're itching to get that, as soon as it hits, hey, the money's in the plan, boom, I can do whatever I want with it, it's whatever. But it also helps you from a fiduciary responsibility perspective, because, again, as I mentioned before, target dates are qualified default investment alternatives by the government's standards, which says that, hey, you're good by putting people there. But if I have 100% of my money in my money market, and you move me to the new plan, 100% of money market, you know, that's frowned upon. Hey, you didn't do what's right by this guy, you should have done something better for them, because they're not paying attention, it's your fault, you know, you don't want that. So that's why we would do that.
Do we have a default enrollment? In other words, the employee is automatically enrolled, even if they take no action, a new employee? Is that the way we operate?
Your current plan, I believe so. I believe you have automatic enrollment, do you not? Help me, somebody, yeah.
There's a paper document that says keep all funds, if they do that, we try to get ahead of that, and we'll discuss it.
But at least they're enrolled.
Yeah, because there's a money that goes in, so it has to go somewhere. So you've got that default already.
Okay, so back to this question that Treasure asked, we have 80 employees who might be affected by this. How do each of those 80 make the transition on an individual basis? Does MERS, someone from MERS sit down and talk to them, or is it automatic?
Yes.
How's it happen?
Again, both, because MERS will be out here to do educational meetings, to help people understand how to go onto the website, do whatever they want to do, if they want to do it themselves and make selections. If they do nothing, and they'll be told this as well, if you don't want to do anything, this is what will happen to your money, it will come over automatically, you don't have to do anything, there's nothing physical to do, except reelect a beneficiary, and that's it. So it can be totally, if I wasn't paying attention at all, my money would move over to MERS, I'd get a new statement, it would be in a target date fund, that would be that, and I could do whatever I want to do with it.
But what if they don't understand either of those? Would the MERS person work with that individual?
Absolutely.
Say, okay, you've got this Nationwide fund, this looks like a match over here with what we offer, is that customized almost?
Sure, again, there'll be group and/or individual meetings for those who want to engage. So anyone who has a question, not only onsite, but also over the phone. So they have a call center, so you go, hey, my township's moving to MERS, I don't understand what I should do, can you help me? Absolutely. So-
It'll be unlikely that Nationwide has a fund that matches, because MERS is indexed, you wouldn't have a finely tuned Nationwide plan.
Conceivably not, but there could be some index funds over there too. You know, there certainly is somewhere in the lineup, there's some index-
They're not all for private.
Nationwide index funds, but yes, it's not going to be an apples-to-apples, it's not going to move from this fund to this fund exactly the same, it's going to be different.
Different funds, but it's same result.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
That's why you have to explain it.
Absolutely.
Does MERS have an international fund?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so if you're in some international fund, but then there's different grades of international fund at 457B Nationwide, some are emerging market fund, and some may be more established, larger companies.
Sure.
So you, I don't know if you'll be able to duplicate it unless you open a brokerage account.
Well, there's an emerging market fund at MERS, you could be in that. There's a foreign fund, there are varieties, you know, there's 29 different fund options, so you have a good choice of stuff. But yeah, if you didn't see your flavor, you could certainly go out and do that. Again, vast majority of people, vast, 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 99% of people don't engage that way. They just say, yeah, this is a great manual, I'll take whatever's in here.
So how do you address the situation? We're near the top of the market, and so people that are in the current John Hancock Nationwide, it will be liquidated, turned into cash, so they will realize the, not, they won't pay tax, but the gain or the loss will be realized.
Well, again, it's not realized in the sense of any taxation, so it's just a paper transaction. But the way we like to talk about that, when you move like-to-like, okay, so let's say for the sake of argument, I'm in a target date with John Hancock, and I moved to a target date at MERS, most likely, the percentage of equities in that particular fund are going to be very, very close. So, and the products inside those, you know, the individual company stock issue, it's going to be similar, maybe not exactly the same, but close. So I'm going to have, you know, large-cap stuff, large-cap stuff. So I'm moving like-to-like. So yeah, I'm selling here, but I'm buying here, I'm buying at, again, hypothetically, the same price I'm selling at, so it just kind of slides over.
How much time lapse between the sell and the buy?
There'll be some blackout period, okay, that's the blackout time. And I would guess that to be somewhere between one to three weeks, somewhere in that neighborhood. So that's always difficult, because if the market's going up like crazy, like at the beginning of the year, it's painful to watch your money kind of languish for a week or two or three. If the market's tanking, like you see an 800-point drop the other day, you feel pretty good about it, you know, you think, hey, great, my money's insulated. There's no right time to do this, there's no wrong time to do this, you just do it, and you sort of bite the bullet and go. And I'll give you a great example, and this is something that we do in presentations, but I think it's kind of staggering. If you think back to the worst day in market history, one of the worst, I think it's the worst day, day, not years, the worst day was Black Monday in 1987.
October 19.
Yeah, I think it was. The market lost in one day, roughly 23, 24% of its value in one day. People were freaking out, right? It was a very, very bad day. If you invested $100,000 that day, on the Friday before Black Monday, you woke up, you If you invested $100,000 that day, on the Friday before Black Monday, you woke up, you had $73,000 or $77,000, you were very sad. If you did nothing with that money, didn't add anything to it, didn't take anything out, did nothing for 30 years, I pose this question to you.
Yeah, I read this.
Yeah, give me a guess, don't say if you know. Give me a guess what it grew to in 30 years, 30 years later, did nothing but be in the S&amp;P 500, that's it. 2.2 million. $77,000 went to 2.2 million in 30 years. Now, what happened in those 30 years? We had wars, recessions, tech bubble, 9/11, Iraq war, blah, 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 crazy stuff, right? The market crash of 2008, on top of that, everything, everything all in. You made 2.2 million off of your 77,000 in 30 years. So what does that tell you? When's the best time to invest? I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball, but certainly, you know, being in the market for the long haul is the way to go. Now, if you're an older guy like me, you're 60 or so, you've got to say to yourself, gee, I don't want to be super aggressive, you know, I want to be a little bit less aggressive. You say, okay, I'm going to dial down.
Best time to invest is to do exactly the opposite of everything I do.
Don't follow.
The George Costanza.
Yeah, exactly.
Do the opposite.
Well, the rule of thumb I have is when your barber is giving you investment advice, don't do that.
Don't do that.
Don't do that.
Well, I can tell you from personal experience, when Sue and I were at the state, I think the state switched our 401As twice, no warning, we just got a letter in the mail saying, we're switching you over, and we both did, you know, I think we both did better off as we went along. But, you know, I do think that we have, we've been incredibly transparent during this process and tried to involve the labor union leadership as much as possible. I will tell you that both the fire union is requesting MERS for everything. I don't want to speak for the TPOEM, but I believe the police unions are also heavily in favor of MERS because they have, you know, those unions are well-financed, and they have, they employ lawyers and finance people and professionals, and they've done the research as well. And so we are certainly listening to those two major unions as well as we try to reach a decision on this. So I'm just throwing that out there.
And I'll tell you this, you're doing a great thing right now, just because you are fulfilling your fiduciary responsibility to listen and look and see what's out there. Whether you decide to do something is up to you, but it's hard to ignore, at the very least, you need to engage with your current providers and lower fees. But, you know, is there a better mousetrap? You know, in my opinion, again, with nothing to gain, I think there is.
Okay, any other questions for Steve at this point? Any questions or comments from the audience? Sherry? No? You talked outside, I saw you guys. You had much better venue than we did for that first hour. Sandy?
We can't hear you, we can't hear you.
Do the employees have to sign off for the transition?
Yeah, you would think so, but no, because the question was sort of asked earlier in the sense that, you know, you don't have an individual account, even though it's your own individual money, you don't have an individual contract with any of these providers, it's a group contract. So if the township decides to move the group, everybody goes. So no, you don't have the option to say, I want to stay behind with Nationwide or John Hancock.
So whose money is it?
It's your money, it's always your money, so it just moves over to a different house, but it's at MERS, if you move to MERS, versus John Hancock or Nationwide. You, as an employee, unfortunately, just like in the private sector, if I work for General Motors or Ford and they decide to change their 401K provider, I have no say in that, my money goes. So as an employee, the township here decides who will be the custodian, again, to the greater interest of the group.
And what you're saying is if we move to MERS, then the township is no longer the custodian?
When I say custodian, I'm talking about John Hancock or Nationwide or ICMA. Custodian's a person that like keeps the money in a box, for example, just as an analogy. So MERS would be the custodian, but the township still controls MERS. So if the township decided, year, two, five, 10 years from now, hey, we don't like MERS anymore, there's a better mousetrap out there, they could move the money there, and everybody's money would move over there.
But currently, the township is the fiduciary, and now MERS would be the fiduciary.
Right.
Not the custodian, but the fiduciary.
They would be both.
They would be both, right.
So just one other comment. I don't really have anything to gain or lose with this, I haven't been here long enough, I'm not going to be here long enough. But my concern is that I know that the union presidents and nonrepresented employees got to sit down and talk with John Hancock about Empower. The rest of the employees were not exposed to Empower. So to say, a vote was taken by Sherry's union prior to that presentation, so the people who voted in favor of MERS did so without knowing about the Empower, so I would at least like to see them have an opportunity to hear it.
Well, I'm sorry, we've presented, we had Burnham and Flowers meet with the union presidents, the union leadership, we have unionized employees, we cannot meet with 80 or 100 people individually. So we met with Burnham and Flowers and the union employees, the union leadership, they made a presentation, and we have not talked tonight about votes being taken by anybody. If you want to go there, the TPOEM did vote in favor of MERS for the 401A program.
Without the presentation from John Hancock, and I didn't come here to argue with you, Mr. Heisey, I'm just stating that it is employee money, and I think that that needs to be considered when you make your decision.
I don't see any motion or decision made by the employees to nominate you as their representative in these discussions.
I didn't ask to be theirs, but I do have money involved in this, Mr. Heisey, and I'm entitled to have an opinion, and I'm entitled to questions.
You certainly are, but you claim to be representing employees tonight, which.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, you did.
I said, who do you represent?
I represent the taxpayers of Plymouth Township. I also represent the employees, because I am the fiduciary of this plan, and I want to make sure that they have the best plan possible.
And I want to make sure they have an opportunity to know that.
And I've had employees come to me for the last three years who have asked to be part of MERS because they know it's a better plan.
I'd say, just to be clear, your money is your money, and always will be your money. So it's just, again, an employee unfortunately does not have the opportunity to have a lot of say in most instances. In fact, it's been more say here than ever.
This is a long-term employee compared with short-term employees will have the greater benefit because they'll be here for 25 or 30 years.
Correct.
And save a lot of investment fees.
Right.
People who are going to retire in two to three years are apprehensive.
Even with that, though, to your point earlier, if someone had, let's say, $500,000 in this plan, they've been really saving very, very well, and you could save close to 1% of $500,000, that's five grand. I'd take that, you know, that's nothing to sneeze at.
A year.
A year, yeah.
Yeah, 1% seems like a small number until you put it in those terms.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
And whether we like it or not, we have a far more mobile workforce now, and people who are coming to this township are probably, in the future, not going to be here for 20 or 30 years, but they may go on to another municipality, and a portable system like this is an attraction for us to attract good people. Whether we retain them or not is another issue, but the portability of the MERS plan is certainly something that I've personally seen in local and county government, and it's another positive thing for us when we're trying to hire folks.
You see it every day with people leaving to different communities from our police and fire. Employees that come from other private sector employers could roll over 401Ks into this plan, right?
Yes, that is my understanding, yes.
Yeah, do you generally recommend they do that, or?
Rollovers, yeah, a variety of yeses and nos on that, yeah. I mean, some people, when they consolidate their assets, then they have the availability to loan out of there, which, again, we're not big loan fans, but yeah, I mean, some people like that, so if I'm bringing over $50,000, but I'm starting from scratch here, I have nothing to loan because I can't loan from my previous employer, so that's a big plus. Plus, the cost of this plan is exceptionally low, so that makes it attractive. If I went out, if I took my $50,000 and went into an investment advisor and said, hey, I want to invest $50,000 with you, my all-in cost is probably going to be somewhere close to 200 basis points, 2%, right? I got the fund expense plus the advisor's expense, you know, assuming the advisor charges 1% less to say, which is pretty low.
So who's eligible? Is it all full-time, only full-time? Who is eligible?
You are.
Am I eligible?
Yeah. You have a 457B, you can do it. I have one.
Kurt just shook his head, no.
You have a 457 with the township? You do?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Had it for years, still use it. I have money in it. If we did this, what's the timing? If the board approved this, say in September, what would be the timing that the MERS money would, the money would show up in MERS approximately?
Approximately three to four months for the transition to occur. I would suggest we take our time with it and do it either, you know, right after the beginning of the year, sometime thereafter, simply because we want to have enough time for the MERS people to reach out to your retirees and really let them know that this is an issue if they have money in that fixed account, so they can pull all their money out and go. And then also to give current employees who have that fixed account money the opportunity to shift over. So I would suggest first quarter.
Retirees can, they can do anything they want, they can roll it over, they can roll it over into Nationwide and stay there regardless of what we're doing.
Well, yeah, they can do a rollover to anything they want, but if they don't leave the township plan prior to the changeover, then they're stuck with that fixed account issue of being paid out over 60 months.
Just for those fixed accounts, fixed interest accounts.
Right. Right.
Just a comment from my perspective, I mean, whether or not, there is not a huge benefit to this, to the township. The fiduciary is an important point, I get that. Whether I cut a check to MERS or I cut a check to John Hancock on a monthly basis is not an efficiency saver for me. This is really all about the benefits to the employees, which you listed out in all those. And I don't want people to think that we're making this decision because the township is going to save a lot of money or create a lot of efficiencies. This really has nothing to do with the township, it has everything to do with what we're looking for as a whole to the benefit of the employees.
That is correct. It saves the township $0. It's neutral to you, other than the facts you pointed out.
We want employees to have the best opportunities to save for their future retirements, so that's why we're seeking some improvement in the fees. It's just disappointing that our current suppliers, over the last 25 years, never came forward. I brought this up several times to previous supervisors, and they all did not want to consider it.
Well, I have to ask, why were two insurance providers chosen for these?
Historically speaking, insurance providers are very large in the retirement plan space, both on the 401K side of things, in the 401A side, 457. Insurance providers historically have done a lot of business there.
Historically meaning going back 30 years?
Yeah, exactly right.
But in modern times, that's, I mean.
No, even to this day, but all these products have evolved, right? Just as you're seeing currently with the new pricing that's being offered by John Hancock. Everybody's, you know, in my industry, we call it a race to the bottom in terms of fees, expenses, which is good for consumers. You know, go back 20 years, and 401Ks were so ridiculously expensive, it would spin your head, and you fast-forward to today, and you say, wow, this is a great plan because it's very, very inexpensive. And part of that's through government regulation, which is good, part of that's just because people are better consumers. And so they want to know, and the fee disclosures that have to come out now, and people see what's being charged. You know, there were plans that they're charging north of 4% to run plans, which, highway robbery, but hell, a lot of that's just gone by the wayside. So, but insurance company's not the bad guy here. Insurance companies have evolved as well, so the fact there's some really great insurance companies. People say, wow, why don't we just go to Fidelity, or why don't we go here? That's not always the case. You can get better deals with insurance companies in many instances in the private sector.
Well, Nationwide's a huge insurance company.
Huge, yeah.
Are you talking about like annuities?
Well, annuities or life insurance, you know, Nationwide does everything. Nationwide is on your side, right? They'll insure your car, your house, and your life and your disability and everything else. They're a humongous company.
Okay, anything else? Board members, public? All right. You want to say a few things? Huh? Yeah, no, you can comment on this issue.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Carles, I do represent Burnham Flower Insurance Group. Ironically, probably many of any employees who are in here today, they may know my brother Todd. He's been with Burnham Flower for about 30 years, and unfortunately couldn't make it tonight. And really what predicated me showing up is I do work on the east side now, so we have a couple reps locally here. And we had a few calls to the office with some employee concerns, and then we did take a look and noticed there was the presentation tonight. And I do want to step back and say thank you to Steve for allowing us to come in and to township a couple months ago. I know Todd has been working on getting in here for a year or so, trying to present some different options. We have had fee reductions over the years with John Hancock, not quite as substantial as what you've seen lately. The whole market, as Steve has mentioned, has been compression, race to the bottom. We've been scrambling, doing that as well, trying to reduce where we can, also looking at other vendors. And John Hancock is overpriced, absolutely. The numbers he did show you were what currently is in place, they do not reflect what we did present. And when you are looking at other options in presentations, I would recommend to show the comparison of the current plan, so you're apples-to-apples. In regard to that, we did bring in Empower in a very impromptu matter. We came in to show John Hancock with a combination of the Nationwide plan, but we did not do a full Empower presentation. We'd love that opportunity to do that, we're available this week, next week, before the next board meeting. I'd like you to see the options with Empower. Very, very strong program. They do the technology, the onboarding, the fiduciary's taken care of, everything, there's a lot of options in there. In addition to that, with some of the pricing model, economies of scale, you're talking going from a current plan, we have about $8 million, we can add almost double that and manage another $6 million of the Nationwide plan. Again, economies of scale come down. So we need to start considering apples-to-apples, is all I'm saying. And again, it's about the employees, whoever's here, the board has been gracious enough to let us show them what we currently have, but there are other options, we'd love a chance to present that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I wasn't going to hold you three minutes because we're, you know, we want to give you, make sure that you had a chance to speak. Okay, anything else from the board? All right, very good. Thank you very much, everybody. We're going to move on to item G, this is supervisor and trustee comments. Tonight, you did receive a copy of the, from my office, you received a copy of the draft budget and copies of the police forfeiture, drug forfeiture budgets from both the state and federal forfeiture funds. So we're going to have recurring budget discussions, we're not going to talk about it tonight, but we'll start at our next meeting. And then my goal is to have the public hearing on the budget on October 8th, and then hopeful approval on November 12th. I also, we will be meeting on September 10th, which our regular meeting, our next regular meeting, we will have a special study session on December, I'm sorry, on September 17th to meet with Huron Valley Ambulance on a draft contract with them and to talk about the budget. And then we will have another regular meeting on September 24th. And that's all I have. Bob?
No September 3rd.
No September 3rd because of the Labor Day weekend. Bob?
Nothing.
Gary Heitman?
Jerry?
Mark?
I'm good.
Chuck?
To add things to the budget, who do I send the email to?
Well, we still don't have a finance director, so I would send it to either both myself and Mark.
All right, these are simple ones, just for the park.